Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Once again, as we rise for a pledge, I will ask you to remain standing. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This past week, we have lost three more great leaders in our community. Just a couple of days ago, the renowned state historian John Cunningham, longtime Floren Park resident, but a 1938 graduate at Drew. Included in his many history books was the history of Madison, and also one of the Madison area YMCA, having served on the Y board when the Y moved from Main Street to its current home. No one can speak on the history of our state and hold the audience captive the way John Cunningham could. Another Drew graduate was the Right Reverend Monsignor Vincent Puma, who grew up in Madison and served as pastor of Madison's St. Vincent's Church. An early assignment as priest put the young father Vincent Puma in Dover. Seeing a need, he learned Spanish to be able to talk with the migrant workers. He returned to his hometown of Madison in the eighties, and under the direction of St. Vincent's, it underwent major renovations. His ability to speak Spanish made him very valuable to the growing Hispanic population in Patterson, and he was called back to serve that city. Again, he saw a need to help the homeless, and he founded Eva's Kitchen. The program evolved from serving thirty meals a day to today's Eva's Village, including housing, addiction recovery, and of course, the kitchen serving the homeless. His vision and heart will continue to serve those in need for years to come. And also, Joe Mazaca. Served as Madison's borough attorney, advising the mayor and borough council for sixteen years, and prior to that, the attorney for the borough's planning board and Board of Adjustment. He defended and fought for Madison with a record that far eclipsed the Miami Dolphins' undefeated season. It is hard to remember a time before Joe took his seat at this table. His advice was always sound and had the best interests of Madison in mind. He survived many different personalities at this table, and dais, and that is certainly not a small feat. His love in Madison went beyond his dedication as an attorney. It included using his hobby as a photographer. His annual calendar was a must for anyone who loved the sights of Madison. In honor of Joe's memory, I had ordered the flags to be flown at half-staff this past Saturday, and tonight, we will leave his seat empty. We will be asking the family will be here at our June 25 meeting. We want to do a further recognition for Joe's service to the borough of Madison. So please take a moment to honor these three great men, leaders and legends in our community. Thank you. These are volunteers that many of us get to see at stressful times, but also get to see in fine times. They do a tremendous service to the borough of Madison. Last year, there were two weather phenomena that really pushed us to the limits, and the ambulance corps stepped up to help the community and our residents. So I have a proclamation for the borough of Madison, from the borough of Madison. Whereas, the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps was founded over fifty years ago, which responded to over fifty thousand calls since that time. And whereas, the corps consisted of over sixty members, all volunteers responded primarily to donations. And whereas, the Madison Ambulance Corps has made a progress conclusion to the borough of Madison during the two recent weather events, Hurricane Irene and the Halloween snowstorm. Whereas in August, during Hurricane Irene, a town shelter was opened and brought a farm, and the ambulance corps provided medical care. And whereas, two state of thorns in ambulance buildings responded to calls throughout Hurricane Irene, as well as responding to a house fire immediately following the hurricane. Whereas, when the Halloween snowstorm hit, the ambulance building, which had that backup generator, became a twenty-four hour shelter for Madison residents, with ambulance corps volunteers providing food, a warm place to stay, a place to sleep for forty residents for two nights, and the medical care for those at the shelter who requested it. And whereas, the power of the town was restored, the members of Madison Ambulance Corps drove residents' stay and shelter back to their homes. And whereas, two crews of approximately ten members each, who at each, once again, left their families to stay at the thorn ambulance building, responded to calls throughout the storm and the days following. Now therefore, I, Lord of the H. Thomas, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, to hereby extend thanks and appreciation to the volunteers and Madison Ambulance Corps for their reverence, dedication, and commitment to the residents of the borough of Madison. Thank you for everything you did through the storm and continue to serve Madison. Employees of the month, Ben Samara and Tamika Trotman of the Health Department for their conduct of professionalism in performing duties of registered environmental health specialists when interacting with members of the restaurant community. It is not too often when you get thank you notes from restaurant owners after a health department visit, so they are to be commended. And from the library, the library's final weeks of strategic planning process. At present, the Board of Trustees and Advisory Strategic Planning Committee are reviewing the draft document. We anticipate trustee approval of the final document in the next month. Plans are in place for a busy summer at the library. The Summer Reading Club theme is Dream Big Read, with many activities for children scheduled during July and early August. Registration begins Saturday, June 23, with the Summer Reading Club kickoff celebration. And the library and Madison Senior Center are once again presenting summer seminar series featuring ten lectures in the library's Chase Auditorium. Full information is available on the website, as well as Senior Center and library. And I just received, this just in, a little reminder, I did receive a letter from Mia Romano-Brown, resident in the Oak Knoll section, that's Cedar, Pine, Beach. Rose, thank you. But not only did she send a letter to commend Dennis Harrington's great work as oversight, as our engineering oversight, his ability to respond to neighbors' concerns, she was very impressed with, and she was so impressed that after writing the letter, she and her daughter delivered home baked chocolate chip cookies and other goodies for the engineering staffs. I want to recognize her for taking that time. Reports from committees, Public Safety, Ms. Sukamoto.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to take this opportunity to share a success story from Project Community Pride. A student from Madison High School was referred to the program earlier this year, who was at high risk of not graduating due to excessive absences. The student worked very hard with Project Community Pride and also with the school resource officer, Officer Lisa Esposito. I'm pleased to report that he will be graduating next week. Also, many of you may know that Project Community Pride is a program in partnership with Floren Park and Chatham Borough. This year, Chatham High School Guidance Department started referring students, including Chatham Township residents, to the program. So far, we receive a great deal of positive feedback from their guidance counselors. Project Community Pride is going to have a car raffle to raise funds for its programs, and all the details will be available very soon, so please stay tuned and support the program. The Fire Department responded to Chatham on May 31st to assist the Chatham Fire Department at the scene of a structured fire in an apartment building located on Main Street. The family's cat was found semi-conscious by two Madison firefighters. It was carried outside and administered oxygen with one of the recently donated pet oxygen masks by another Madison firefighter. The cat came back to life after a few minutes and was taken to the Madison Vet Hospital by Chatham personnel. We thank this person for his life-saving donations. Last week, the Fire Department had all its ground ladders tested by a third-party agency. All ladders passed the inspection. We would like to congratulate volunteer firefighter Chris Keeling for completing the 150-hour firefighter one training at the Morris County Fire Academy. We also would like to congratulate Officer Jim Cavassa and Officer Jolongo from the Police Department for graduating from the police motorcycle school. They will now join the other six trained motive officers on their team. The Madison Police Department also conducted a bike rodeo for the Madison Community House, which was attended by approximately fifty children in town. Also, the work for reducing the speed limit on Ridgedale Avenue continues, and we hope to present a recommendation to the council at the next council meeting. Also, lastly, I would like to recommend to the mayor that we revamp the Traffic Calming Committee, which we spoke about a couple of council meetings ago, to get more input and also to get more stakeholders involved. In addition to Ridgedale, some of the areas that the Police Department are currently paying its special attention to are the junior school area, Glenwild at Torrey J., around Central Avenue School, Woodland, and a few other areas. Thank you.
And we can, Complete Streets, which is on the agenda, kind of relates to that, so we can just discuss that, so thank you for being here.
That'll be great.
Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have no report, except for later on in the agenda discussions, we'll be talking about the automated meter system, solar rate structures, and the voluntary service containment program, so when we get to that point, we can discuss further there, but otherwise, no report. Thank you, Mayor.
Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Link. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Cannonell.
Thank you, Mayor. The primary elections have come and gone, they're quite successful, and as a result, we will have a full slate of candidates for the local election in November. I'd like to thank everyone involved with the election process and the candidates for expressing interest to serve Madison. We will be speaking about third quarter estimated taxes later today, there's not a lot to it. And one last item for discussion is, as instructed in the last meeting, I met with concerned citizens regarding some of the infrastructure issues that he believed we face and have submitted my report to the Executive Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts Downtown Concert Series is beginning. It's going to be held every other Friday on the museum front lawn from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's a family-friendly event, and the concert series is free. Guests are encouraged to bring lawn chairs and picnic on the lawn or join the audience on blocked off Green Village Road. The initial June 20 concert features The Project, a classic rock band. The full schedule will be posted shortly. The DDC is once again partnering with Drew University to bring the Farmer's Market downtown. Gary's Wine and Marketplace has again agreed to be a sponsor of the market. The Farmer's Market starts this Thursday and will run for ten weeks on Waverly Place. Starting on August 23, the market will move to Green Village Road in front of the museum, and will run for an additional ten weeks until October 25. A ribbon cutting ceremony will be June 14 at 1:45 on Waverly Place. Okay, from MACA. The summer musical Once Upon a Mattress is being presented by one of MACA's institutional members, Playwrights Theater, in collaboration with the Recreation Department. There are still parts from Madison students, so please contact Diane Petrowski at Playwrights Theater for more information. MACA is hosting a member night at the Shakespeare production of Comedy of Errors at the Outdoor Stage at the College of St. Elizabeth on July 26. There are discount tickets for those who wish to participate. Let's see, okay. They recently held the Artist Studio Tour throughout Madison this past weekend. It was a great success. They showcased twenty-seven artists at fifteen venues around town. This event is also a favorite with residents and visitors to the town. Okay, and one last piece, the Community Garden's ribbon cutting is scheduled for Saturday, June 16 at 10 a.m. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Flo Royce, who is the nursing director, and Christine Schessler, who is the health educator of the Board of Health, have applied for a $25,000 grant to Robert Wood Johnson's Road Maps to Health. Because of the services that are available to our residents and to our towns we service, the Board of Health is very eligible for this particular grant, and it looks like we have a good chance of receiving one of the six grants that will be given. Flo Royce and I had a very interesting conversation about how public health is moving into a different direction, and it's moving towards partnerships of various groups and the community. There's like lots of grant opportunities for the Board of Health, such as one that is given by Robert Wood Johnson for shared services with other communities. We're going to be having lots of discussions with the Board of Health, and we'll see if we can work the shared service grant into helping us. Madison currently fits into those categories, and the grant amount is $250,000, and it's $125,000 each from Robert Wood Johnson, so we'll definitely be applying for that grant. One of the things that I noticed, I was reading an article, and it's really funny because later on, you're going to be listening to a discussion for Complete Streets policy, and when you look at how things work together and how we're integrated and we need to work together, because this little blurb talks about the U.S. spends more on healthcare than any other country. We are far from the healthiest. If we look to our healthcare system to correct this imbalance, we may be looking in the wrong direction, because health starts where we live, learn, work, and play, long before we step into the doctor's office. Factors such as neighborhood walkability, healthy eating, habits, safe housing, and access to good jobs all help to make the healthy choice the easier choice, and I thought that this was a great correlation for the Complete Streets policy, working together, so I'm looking forward to doing that. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received one email on June 8 from Cecilia Ditzel of Green Avenue regarding the excellent service provided by Borough employee Daniel Buckle.
Okay, this is the first of two invitations for the audience to come up and speak. This one is a restricted one. You may speak on any of our agenda discussion items or resolutions that are listed. The agenda items for today are the Every Fifteen Minutes Program, the Automated Meter System, Solar Rate Structure, and Voluntary Service Containment Program, Third Quarter Estimated Taxes, Sign Permit Application Fees, the $20,000 for LED light fixtures Cook Avenue Parking Lot, the Complete Streets Program, Illegal Sump Pump Connections, and Park Avenue Speed Limit, and also, as I mentioned, any resolutions listed. So please step up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and the item you want to speak on, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. As Mark Twain once said, "I apologize for my long letter, I didn't have time to write a short one." So get your thoughts together and try to stay within the three minutes. Anyone wishing to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Sandy Kolikaski, Park Avenue. I just saw on the agenda today that you're going to talk about the speed limit on Park Avenue, and it's a resident Park Avenue. I get to see firsthand how many people use it as, yeah, a place to walk their dogs, people with strollers, people coming from the Senior Center in, you know, those motorized wheelchair. So Park Avenue is heavily used by pedestrians, folks walking on the street. One of the things I just want you to consider is that, you know, somebody from the Police Department could probably speak to this better, but, you know, speed on a road really makes a difference to outcomes. It takes a car, you know, your reaction time, then the distance that your car travels for every ten miles per hour increase, it's another ten feet of just reaction time that your car has traveled, and it almost doubles for every ten miles per hour, how far your car travels before you can fully brake, and that's with a non-distracted driver and good conditions. So I hope that the council is considering trying to get the speed limit lowered by a full ten miles per hour. One of the things that I kind of noted is that, you know, the entire length of Park Avenue is one mile, so for somebody traveling by car at 35 miles per hour versus 25 miles per hour, the difference is less than a minute of travel time, and I think that, you know, the outcomes could be, you know, much more important than, you know, about forty seconds of somebody's travel time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on the discussion agenda or resolutions?
Sam Cerciello, Park Avenue, Madison. The two resolutions I want to talk on is 156 and 164. While we're talking about Park Avenue, and I live on Park Avenue also, I remember I used to be able to pull out of my driveway without even looking. Now sometimes I gotta wait six, seven minutes to get out of my driveway. I support Sandy's comments. She's absolutely right, there's a lot of action on Park Avenue, and I would make a suggestion that if they're going to change the speed limit with the signs, tell them to put some no parking signs along Park Avenue, especially like when I'm going home, coming west, and if you're familiar with Park Avenue, there's Elm Street, and a lot of times cars are going to make a left-hand turn on Elm Street, and there's cars parked, they don't get, people that rent the house over there where DeLuca used to live, right on the corner of Elm Street, on Park Avenue, two or three cars parked there sometime, and when the car's making a left-hand turn to go on Elm Street, you gotta wait, and if the cars weren't there, you can pass them on the right. And also, there's a car parked right on, as you leave Ridgedale Avenue going down, it's almost there every day, every night, and I don't know how this guy can park his car right where it merges into two lanes. So again, like I suggested, there are some signs towards my house, but in beginning from Ridgedale down, I would suggest they put some no parking signs on both sides of the street, because Mark Park Avenue's getting worse and worse with the traffic. That's my suggestion on 164. Now, 156, can anybody explain what's that settlement costing the taxpayers? What's that costing us?
Twenty-nine thousand dollars.
That's $29,000, and it comes out of reserve we had for settling of tax appeals.
Who's that go to?
It goes back to the property owner, the 20.
In other words, is there particularly a company that gets that, or?
RXR.
Yeah, it's RXR, who's basically the, Geralda Farms owns most of Geralda Farms office buildings.
All right. And we're probably getting a lot of more tax appeals, am I right, from up there?
Well, we just had a, I was just at ribbon cutting last week for prudential real estate investors that just took over 100,000 square feet in Geralda Farms Seven, so that's a move in a positive direction, as for those, and I won't, I'll stop the watch temporarily here.
No, I suppose.
We're almost finished, but for those that attended the workshop we had on reevaluation, that commercial is done far differently than residential. If you have an empty home, it's three bedrooms, it's two baths, it's going to be assessed whether you're living it or it's empty. It's assessed the same way. Commercial is different. If you have an office building and it's empty, the value goes down and you can appeal. And if the building fills up, then your assessment would go up, and so there is some fluctuations, and that's the way the laws are written, and that's the way the system works.
Is there any more empty buildings up there, or are pretty good shape up there?
There's some floors empty, I don't think there's any.
Draw to one.
Draw to one, okay, yep.
Yeah, well, don't do no deals like we did with Sherry Powell, you know, we gave him tax relief for five years, and then after it came up, they moved, you know, so let's not do any kind of stuff like that anymore.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on anything on the agenda? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to agenda discussions. First one, Every Fifteen Minutes Program. Jeanne, you want to do an introduction?
Certainly, thank you. A very successful Every Fifteen Minutes program was held at the Madison High School in March, and we have here this evening Officer Chad Rekka to recap the highlights of the program with a brief PowerPoint presentation, and also, he's going to tell us his recommendations for next year. Chad?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for offering me a few minutes. I know it's a full agenda tonight. Every Fifteen Minutes was a two-day drunk driving program for our juniors and seniors at the high school, aimed, of course, at preventing drunk driving. This was Madison's first Every Fifteen Minutes, and first, I'd like to take a moment and thank Chief Trevina, Lieutenant Ashton, Dr. Rossi, and the Board of Vet. Without their support, this wouldn't have been possible. I hit it once and I broke it. There we go. We had several goals and objectives for the program. The first, of course, to challenge our students to think about the dangers of drunk driving, to, of course, decrease the likelihood that they will drink and drive and create an experience where our students felt emboldened and take a stand for their friends and their family when they were making risky decisions. I'll go over briefly some of the funding. The majority of the program was funded by the Board of Vet, Massa, private donors, there was no overtime generated by the Police Department. Every Fifteen Minutes is a nationwide program, and the reason it's successful is because it teaches our kids about drinking and driving through experience and emotion. There are no lectures for them to sit through, there's no homework, and the program is aimed to make the kids feel the loss of a fellow class member to drinking and driving as much as is possible without it being real life. Program's held every two years for the juniors and seniors, and it had to bring a lot of partners together in the community for this to happen. There's a sampling of the public sector participants and some of the private sector participants, and I probably missed a few, but that was, it was a big undertaking, and we needed a lot of support. Madison was one of five municipalities which coordinated the Every Fifteen Minutes program this year, and we were the only municipality in Morris County. The program was filmed by the Fairleigh Dickinson University Film Department. They filmed- They filmed most of the goings-on on March 19th. And their editors were up all night, which I can attest to, editing the program for the film to be shown the next day. So I'll break down how the program ran. We had 40 kids total who participated. 32 of the students were, quote, "the living dead", which means that they were going throughout their normal course of the morning on March 19th in class. And while they were in class, two clergy members and police officers would walk in to the classroom and read the child's obituary, which was prepared by their parents. We took the kids' cellphones away. They weren't allowed to communicate with anyone for the remainder of the day. Anyone as high schoolers, I borrowed the fire department's straws of life for their cellphones. For a few of them. And all the kids put on Every Fifteen Minutes shirts, which were designed by our students. It's a picture of Reverend Tom and Father George delivering an obituary and taking a child out of the classroom. Later in the day, there was a simulated crash scene in front of the juniors and senior classes. And then there was a DWI trial that Judge Troxel was involved in right downstairs. It's a picture of the simulated crash scene. You can see the firemen getting ready to extricate the victims out of the car. You can see that everything is very lifelike, from full moulage with the victims to the crash damage on the cars. You can also see Officer Pirelli and the captain of the ambulance corps in the background as well. One of the victims was airlifted to Morristown Medical Center, just like in real life, where they were treated by the trauma team. It's a picture of the DWI trial that occurred later that day. Which brings me to the next day. There was a memorial assembly. Two kids were simulated killed in a crash on the 19th. So we had an assembly, a memorial assembly for those two kids, and we presented the film, which I'll show a few minutes of next. We also had a guest speaker. The guest speaker's name was Jill Elliott, mother of Rachel, shown here. Rachel is who we dedicated this program to. Rachel was an eight, was 18 and a freshman at the University of California, and she happened to participate in this program when she was in high school. Rachel was heading to a friend's house one night when she was coming around a corner and a car driving the other way crossed into her lane of traffic. It was driven by Elva Diaz, who was intoxicated. Rachel died later at the hospital, and that was what was left of her car. I told all the kids and everyone who participated Rachel's story because I wanted them to feel a connection to a real person. You know, this Rachel wasn't a number. She had a story behind what happened to her and her life and her family. So Jill pictured here next to Rachel, flew from California to take part in our program. She was there for both days, and she spoke to our kids during the memorial assembly. All of our kids, but they actually decided to put Rachel's initials on their Every Fifteen Minutes shirts during the program. So I'm just gonna give you a brief five-minute clip of the film. And if any of you want the full, it's about 20 minutes, I can supply you with the full video.
Last February, October, died on Monday, March 19th, 2012. Injury sustained in a drunk driving accident. Sally Josephine Curtis died on Monday, March 19th. Jennifer Dunn died on Monday, March 19th.
Justin Perry, yes, died on Monday, March 19th, 2012. He was 17 years old and seen in high school. Memorial Scholarship was set up in a justice memory.
Should we remember her desire to make a difference in New York? We greatly miss her, we always touch my side.
That's one way to hurt.
See, kind of like how we were still happy to be back in the country.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, what did he go back?
Yeah.
Okay, he's got that little thing.
Oh, uh, you're definitely having an injury.
Okay. Now, you don't have any injuries, so I think.
I don't know.
Okay, so we're spot on, you're right. Just ask Master Carter. Report the serious cause of crash, fellow high school, 170, Ridge Dale Avenue. Madison Springs, Madison Fire, 170, Ridge Dale Avenue. In front of Madison High School, but report the serious cause of the accident. Everybody okay? Everybody okay?
Mr. Trevina?
Yes.
How you doing, Sergeant?
Yes.
This is the next question.
Yes.
We have some bad news. If you might come in. There's been a very tragic accident from the high school road this morning. And unfortunately, your daughter Emily was involved in the accident. I'm real sorry to say, but she did not make it.
What happened?
Apparently, there's an individual that was driving that was recently intoxicated. And Emily was in yellow vehicle, whose head on collision. Where is she now? She's still on the scene.
I don't know what's happening.
Absolutely. We'll be arrived there, and we need you to act on it, Emily. All right, I'll stop the video there. You have a pretty good idea. If you have any answer to any questions, anyone has.
Questions? Comments?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll, I do want to say a few words, just because, one, my son was involved in the program and watched, I watched it live, watched his tape, and it still gets to me. So the, the job he did was incredible. The number of hours that must have put in, he must have put into this, I, I don't know. It, we had a little flashback as, one of the processes we went through, if you had your child involved, was a workshop in Morristown Hyatt. So the students were off in one room, parents in another room. And students were asked to write a letter to their parents. You know, the theme was, "I, I died today." And we had to write a letter back saying, your child, to your child that recognized that he died. And if you think it's very difficult to write that letter, but it was just ironically over the weekend, the envelope with the letters, we must have misplaced it. So I opened the envelope and read my son Jack's letter. And of course, my wife read it, and it hits you again. This whole program just reinforces, you know, the, the value of our children and take nothing for granted. The challenge with this, a program like this, is how do you measure it? But I can guarantee you that you saved lives in the future by doing this. So we, we thank you for taking your time and, and the dedication to put this together.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say a special thank you to Chad. This guy spent lots and lots of hours over at the police station without any compensation. He did this on his own. As he told me one night, he spent a lot of time away from his, his wife and his family, but they were, I met them on the 19th, and they were just very, very proud. And I'm very proud that we have young officers like this that will bring a message like this. And this week was such a great week, so we did not have any accidents this week. You know, with prom night and whatever, so, you know, it is still sobering. Thank you.
Jeanne?
Thank you so much for going above and beyond your duties. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rob?
When I was a sophomore at Villanova, my roommate, who was a Madison resident, died in a car accident over spring break here in, in town. And of course, he had borrowed another friend of ours' car, took it home over spring break, and we had to go to the house to pick the car up the day of the accident. And I will never forget having to go into that house. And, you know, it was pretty sobering as a, as a 19-year-old sophomore in college to see how it just really ripped that family apart. Now, as a parent, I can't imagine it. So even if this just saves one life, it's, it's worthwhile. And, and I think that if we can expand the program to, for more students, because it's not just juniors and seniors, it's, you know, all, all high school students. I think that, you know, that, that needs to be made aware of this. I'd certainly be in support of that, because I will never forget that, and I never want to see it to happen to anyone again.
You know, certainly the, the expansion of the program, because it's the, not only the choice of getting behind the wheel when you shouldn't, but the choices that are sometimes made of getting behind, getting in the passenger seat with someone that should not be behind the wheel, and understanding the importance. Again, thank...
Thank you.
Again, residents, I would recommend viewing the, the full video. The memorial service will just reinforce it even more, but thank you. Okay, tough to shift gears. Automated Meter System and Solar Rate Structure and Volunteer Service Containment Program.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to introduce a few people. This, these presentations to the council will cover three utility topics. First one is going to be the advanced metering infrastructure that we've been working on for quite some time now. The second is the voluntary demand response. And the third is the residential solar rates. I want to thank Mr. Landergin, who was my backup to the utility, Jim Sanderson for all his AV work, and a gentleman by the name of Kurt Wilson, who's been helping us out as a consultant. I'd like to present Jim Burnett to kind of go over our first section, which is the advanced metering infrastructure. Jim?
Thank you, Dr. Espinze. I'd like, I have Jim Sanderson here. He's gonna jump in and cover some of the topics here. I'd like to have Kurt Wilson come up as well. Kurt Wilson is, maybe Kurt, you could come up here and just explain and talk a little bit about your background, just for 30 seconds. And so everyone knows, we have hired Kurt as a consultant to help us through this process. It is a $2 million project, and it's an important project for us. And it's something that Kurt's done before, and it's something we've never done before. So that's why we brought Kurt in. Kurt, want you to explain to the captain who you are and...
I'm a consultant, I'm, my name is Kurt Wilson, Curtis Wilson. I'm a consulting engineer, newly working for the Borough of Madison, but I also work for the Borough of Butler up the road here, and a bunch of clients in New York, and New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, and Delaware. I've done a advanced metering infrastructure system at the Borough of Butler. I've done lots of metering projects over time. I am an electrical engineer. Like I said, done a lot of these things and pretty much do utility work.
Basically, an advanced metering infrastructure system allows remote control and access to meters and equipment in houses potentially. This is done basically real-time. We don't have people, we will not have people driving around to see the reading meters. They'll be done wireless later. So there'll be radio control from the house, two devices deployed around the town. We'll be utilizing our borough fiber as a communication medium to minimize occurring costs with the system. And basically, we'll be able to read the meters right from the offices here. Reach out, read them, see where they are. Much higher level of detail. Instead of getting a reading for what you've consumed over the past month, we'll literally be able to parse things down into hour by hour, day by day. And this is a key element of the system. But more importantly, we'll also be able to talk to the meters. We'll be able to communicate with them, change their parameters, communicate with devices on the electrical and water systems, and even control a flood. Back office data management basically boils down to, most of the meter work will be done through the network. People just won't have to go out.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Yep, after, yeah, or...
Yeah, simple question. Will these automated meters be installed inside the homes or outside the home? As you know, currently, we have some of the residents... As you know, currently, we have, some of the residents have the meters inside their house and some outside of their homes.
Correct. They will be installed where they currently are. So, we're not going to be looking to have major infrastructure changes where a meter that was inside is being moved outside, unless there is a problem with making communication. Almost all the time, residents' electric meter is outside. Jay, healy, are wonderful. A meter reader walks around and reads those. The water meters are on the inside. And actually, you'll see an image of a water meter here. And that looks a whole lot like a water meter that you see in your house if you've got a new one. And it's just got a radio control device on it that then can communicate to the outside electric meter, which then can communicate via whatever type of communication platform there is. There's multiple types of platforms. It could be radio, it could be a mesh net interconnection, it could be power line, it could actually be transmitted through the power line. So, that's how they'll communicate. But in terms of, do we need to move meters from inside to outside? The answer is probably not. The meters will all stay where they are. So, I'm going to apologize upfront that there is probably more here than some people will be able to read. This presentation will be available on RoseNet. It's meant to be a combination presentation, but also a report. So, there's some fairly detailed information in it. And as such, I violated one of the PowerPoint rules of having too much text on a particular slide. But in any event, the utility size, in 2011, our utility had metered annual revenue of $24 million. $2 million in water and $2 million in electric. That's a rounded number. We're projecting the AMI project cost to be, estimate to be about $2 million. There are going to be some, in terms of our cost-benefit analysis, there are going to be some direct financial benefits and then some ancillary benefits. And we'll go over those benefits right now. Direct financial benefits are equitable billing. There will be a full system audit. Everyone's house will have a new meter installed on it, unless you opt out of it, and we'll talk about that later. The new meter will resolve any issues with bad metering instrumentation, bad transformer instruments, wrong meter multipliers, bad meter connections. And that will result in revenue enhancements. In addition, there's lost revenues due to un-metered water or un-metered energy, electricity, because of slow meters. Especially, water meters after a certain number of years run slow. Our water utility does not have an established firm policy on water meter replacement. And by replacing the, some of the meters, I know my meter in my house has to be at least 25 or 30 years old. I'm sure that there's water getting through my meter that's not being measured. So, the correctly metering people will make it fair for all. That people, someone with a new home will be paying the same amount as someone with an older home because they'll have a new meter. The third thing is, the direct financial benefit will be the reduction in any sort of energy or water theft, whether it's direct or indirect. The modern meters can identify most tampering and theft, and it does happen. So, in very small font here, we've got an analysis, summary or estimates on where we would generate revenue. But this area alone of direct financial benefits of the equitable billing, we believe will generate half a million dollars or more annually. Kurt will tell you and I'm sure could talk in detail about how he believes that that is a very conservative number. That for this $2 million project, we may see much more than $500,000 a year in additional revenue just from this, just from the first financial benefit. The second financial benefit gets a little more esoteric. We will be, in addition to having these meters, having the opportunity to have time-of-use metering. That is summer rate, winter rate, day rate, night rate. This will limit our price risk by reducing monthly demand charges and limiting the energy purchase during the high-cost hours. Our goal with the time-of-use system is to encourage people to purchase their energy later in the day. For example, I know Councilman Calonello installed some hot water heaters in his house that are hot water heaters that are instantaneous hot water heaters. I have an old hot water heater in my house and it's constantly firing up over and over again. So, more new technology, advanced technology like that, you'll end up having a lower electric rate, using that energy at a lower electric rate time. AMI also supports voluntary load management and demand response. That also further limits price risk. And we will talk about that again a little later on. And finally, a more complete utility system and customer data will improve the utility system efficiency. And there are some information, I might have Kurt come up here and just talk a little bit about loss reduction via power factor and stuff like that, because that's above my, I was a business major, not an engineer. So, if you want to talk about that for a second, Kurt.
You buy a certain amount of power bulk supply to serve the utility. Some of that is lost in the system, okay? Line losses, undersized equipment, oversized equipment, undersized conductor, you know, the wire that carries the thing, the electricity. And with an AMI system, you can track a lot of that stuff down. And as a result, lose less to the system. And, you know, basically, the idea is, when you buy it, okay, it gets served to the customers instead of being lost in the system. Utility system loss, loss reduction via power factor correction. Power factor is a difficult concept, but basically, it has to do with var voltage support. And if you have your power factor on the lines corrected, that means that the lines are transmitting watts instead of other things to the load. So, reduces your losses. And losses are a factor of the square current. So, it's important to do power factor correction. Conservation voltage reduction is a concept where when you get line losses corrected and you get things efficient and you get the equipment sized correctly by having the data to go out and look at those things and make cost-effective changes in the system, you can actually lower the voltage that comes out of the substation. Everybody gets, still gets the same service. And for every, for every 1% of voltage reduction, you get 2% of, you reduce power by, or power used by 2%. So, it's a big deal. It's one of the reasons, it's one of the big reasons that these systems pay back, okay? Because they actually make things more efficient. And that particular thing isn't even included in the revenue enhancement part of this. That's a, that's something that you get indirectly, so to speak. It will also help Michael better balance the load by phase, also increasing the efficiency. And in both the case of water and electric, because you're collecting hourly data, okay? And able to look at that stuff. And it goes into what's called a meter data management system. And the meter data management system, for instance, can do leak detection, leak detection for water right in the customer home. In other words, if it sees something that shouldn't be there, okay, you can notify the customer and have them take care of it. You know, a faulty water heater that's leaking, toilets that are running, that's kind of an extreme example. But also, the same idea on electric. If you have some big loss in the house that you're not aware of, my favorite example is somebody that has a screen porch and has a supplemental heater out in the screen porch and kind of forgets to turn it off so it runs all winter in the screen porch. Meter turns fast. So, there's a lot of benefits to these systems. And it's not just equitable billing, it's also system efficiencies.
And just to touch base, I think Jim will talk about a little more. Another example of that leak detection. My mom had a hot water heater. She was away on vacation in the bottom, dropped out of it. And I found out four days later, when I was keeping an eye on her house. Our system would actually say, would actually read that there is a lot of water flowing through the house all night long from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. That's not normal for any residential household. And a notification would be sent to the owner. So, it can detect things like that and help. In terms of the, go ahead, Jean.
In case there is a leakage somewhere in a customer's home, is this system fully automated? That the information can be retrieved online by the customer? Or this is some work that we actually need to do and send the data to the resident's home?
Our system will notify us and then we will notify the customer. And I believe the system can also have direct email notifications and put it, we haven't designed a system yet. So, it could be as automatic as that if we wanted it to be. We don't anticipate that happening a lot, obviously. But it probably is helpful for someone to know that you wouldn't know it, but for some reason, from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., you use 50 gallons of water every day. Something's happening in your house, probably. Some sort of leak is happening in your house. It's not a benefit to the utility, but it is a great benefit to the resident to have this service. And that's just one of the benefits that we put here. So, in terms of estimated savings from this bulk supply procurement and the advanced rates, we're anticipating $102,000 a year. 5% annual savings through spot market reduction costs of the spot market that we have to pay at. 1.5% annual savings in the demand charges, the peak charges, we pay over $3 million. We're going to talk about that a little later. And then a very small percentage of annual savings in system efficiency measures. The third, yeah, the third major direct financial benefit of an advanced metering infrastructure is data collection staff and infield service. There will not be the number of vehicles driving around town. So, we're going to be using less gas, using less vehicles and not having the staff driving around town. There's going to be a cost savings there. There'll no longer be estimated bills. You will get an actual bill every month. There will be improved billing. Right now, Jay's writing it in a book and the staff in the finance department are transcribing those numbers into the system one at a time. Instead, it will be digitally communicated to the system. So, there'll be tremendous staff savings there and tremendous reduction in errors. And that is a reduction in the amount of time that it takes to fix those errors. There is a possibility of reduction in the number of meter readers that would be down the road. We envision our full-time meter reader position being converted to a data system management person. And also, if someone opts out of this system, they don't have to have a system with a Wi-Fi on it. We would have a meter reader that could still go out there. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. Finally, and you don't think about this, when the electricity goes out, the only way the utility knows that the electricity is out is when someone picks up the phone and calls them and says, "The electricity's out in my house." This system will allow for the data management system to know, "I'm no longer getting a read from 272 Woodland Road or from 16 Academy." And as a result, the power must be out at those locations. So, when Mike comes in after a storm or during a storm, his men can look at it and say, "Okay, there are three houses that are out in the Fairwoods section. Let's do all those at the same time." And then there are two out over by Niles. Instead of just going to down the list or not even finding out that someone didn't call in because they weren't home for the night. So, it increases the efficiency of the men when they're in doing restoration after a storm. That's better customer service, but that's also more energy that is sold to those residents because their power's back up sooner. So, and it also helps us assure that the town is completely restored before the crews go home. Yes, there have been times that the men are on overtime, they go home and all of a sudden, they come back and realize, "Oh, shoot, we missed two people, have to come back." So, the annual estimated cost savings for these metrics here are $70,000 annually. Again, very conservative numbers, we believe. Jim's going to come up, I know this is very small wording, and Jim's going to come up and talk for a few minutes about the, maybe the non-financial benefits of advanced metering.
As Kurt was talking about earlier, in general, having a better handle on the efficiency of the system is going to allow us to improve our cost-effectiveness. Simply because we won't be buying or pumping water or electricity that we are billing for. The added insight into the operating system is also going to give us a lot more proactive information about things that are about to fail. And we can save a fair bit of money on routine maintenance. We've talked about the water leak detection, electrical loss detection. Another feature we'll be able to do is, for example, if people are disputing their bill, we'll be able to show them hour by hour when water or electricity was actually consumed. So, there'll be a lot more transparency in where the bill is coming from. Jim talked about the outage assessments and ways we can identify where there are water leaks or power outages. Most of these systems actually provide for setting parameters on high usage or a meter dropping out. And we'll just automatically send an email that something's not behaving properly. So, it's going, this system will talk to us. We wouldn't even have to ask it. For the future, automated distribution functions, which will allow us to do better management of the system. And again, it'll be automated, so it won't require personal intervention. Load management, demand response programs, very important, especially looking forward, where we'll be able to control how much power could be drawn. And an expandable system will take care of future technologies so that we'll be offering the same quality of service that the much larger utilities are offering to their customers.
Thanks, Jim. One other small ancillary benefit, when you go to close an account, if you have an apartment or you're moving, you can literally just call the utility department and they can do the read right there. Right now, Jay has to drive out to the house, read the meter, say, "Okay, you owe me this much." Draw out a hand-drafted bill and the person pays for it to do a closeout. So, that'll be much more efficient. We talked about the estimated cost of the AMI project being $2 million. The direct financial benefits that we discussed, $500,000 for the equitable billing, $102,000 for the bulk procurement and advanced rates, $70,000 for data collection staff and infield maintenance. We are expecting annual costs of approximately $50,000. That's conservative, we think that's high. The net annual benefit that we believe would generate by the utility is $622,000 for an estimated project cost of $2 million. Just so everyone understands, we're not yet in the process of bidding this out. We have an understanding and have an estimate on the price, but it could be more than $2 million. And we'll talk about that a little more later. The ancillary benefits James just explained about system service and future expandability. So, there are some concerns with an automatic metering infrastructure. There will be, oh, I'm sorry, Jean, do you have a question?
Yeah, going back to the last slide, that's $622,000 of the estimated savings. How much of that $622,000, $622,000 are the additional revenue that we're going to be collect from, we're going to be collecting from our residents?
The majority of it will be that.
Will come from the residents, the users, right?
Yes, the users paying their fair share for what they're consuming.
That's the $500,000, basically, is the.
Correct.
Equitable billing is another word for, we're not charging for it right now. We're not collecting for it.
Okay, thank you.
There are some concerns with AMI. People will complain that, "Why is my bill so high?" If you have a water meter that's very old, you may not have been paying your fair share. There are going to be some situations where when we go to install the meter, there may be some infrastructure around that meter that may need to be replaced. And we're going to be working out the details with whether that's something the borough would be responsible for or whether the homeowner would be responsible for that. Most of the time, as people know from the Waterline Protection Program, actually, the borough owns the pipe just to the curb, the resident owns the pipe underground to the house, the borough owns the meter and the resident owns everything else. So, when we go to make that water meter connection, if there's some problems there, we're going to be working that through in our RFP process and have a better handle as to what those costs would be and whether that would be something the borough would bear, the resident would share, or it would be split. The third question is data security. People are just going to wonder, "Is my data secure? This information that's being transmitted by radio frequency, is it going to be secure?" And it is secure. I'm sure Kurt can come up here and talk about the security measurements that are taken on all the different communications. But that could be a question or a concern. The fourth is, will load shedding become mandatory? Load shedding is when you have a thermostat in your home or at your work. And on the hottest days of the year, this system could send a signal out to that thermostat if you volunteered to be in this program that would say, "Can you turn the thermostat up and turn the air conditioning and ratchet back on the air conditioning?" That's load shedding. Will it be mandatory? Will Big Brother be controlling all your appliances and your toaster and things like that? There will be people who will say that. That's all going to be voluntary and that's all down the road. And then finally, there are some people who have concerns about the environmental health of the radio frequencies that are generated from the meter that are on the house or inside. This has been deployed throughout the country, throughout the world. If you Google "advanced metering infrastructure", you'll see every country in the world. I was reading reports from Slovenia and Australia over the weekend. It is an infrastructure that's out there and is being deployed across the entire world. However, there are some people that are concerned However, there are some people that are concerned about those radio frequencies. They're not any more than what you would get from a cellphone, actually quite a lot less, because you're not sleeping on your meter, but you are holding that cellphone up to your head quite a bit. The solution for that environmental issue, if someone has a true concern about that, is they can opt out of the program and instead have a different meter installed that could be read by us with a gun. Jay would have to go out and read it. So, your meter would not be connected to the communication platform, but you would still be, have your consumption read on an hourly basis. So, there is an opportunity for someone to opt out of that. We would expect that there would be an additional surcharge for the person not opting into the communication platform, but instead having to send someone out specially to drive out to read the meter. So, I just want to, we really want to make council aware of the concerns, because if we do decide to go down the road, then we will have, have these concerns will certainly come up. Time of use rates. What are time of use rates? We talked about it a little bit, higher electric rates on summer days and lower electric rates in the evening. Most utilities have this. We don't. We can't right now, because our electric meters, we read them once a month. We don't know whether you consumed electricity in the day or in the evening. The benefits of time of use rates, it gives residents the opportunity to reduce their electric bill. If they choose to run their clothes dryer and their other appliances in the evening, you're going to get a lower rate on your bill. It also reduces the reliance on the oldest, dirtiest power plants, and we're going to talk, Dr. Esposito's going to talk about that in a few minutes with the voluntary curtailment program. And it reduces the risk in the way we are procuring energy. We've talked a bit about this portfolio strategy that the borough has now adopted for energy starting in June 2014 and beyond. Right now, we're selling energy to residents at one fixed rate, day, night, year-round, same rate. We're not buying it that way. We're buying energy where it's cheaper in the evening, more expensive during the day, and incredibly expensive on the hottest days of the year. By being able to sell the energy the same way we're buying it, we reduce the risk to the Borough of Madison. It would be similar to Bob Landregut and I opening up a gas station and deciding, "We are going to sell gas for $3 a gallon for the entire year," and then roll the dice on how we're buying that gas. Maybe we'll buy it at $2.50, maybe we'll buy it at $3. In this instance, it gives us the flexibility to move with the market. So, those, that's a bit about time of use rates. So, what does time of use rates mean in regard to curtailment? This is actually our actual total town consumption in August of 2010. You'll see that we hit a peak, and this is one of the peaks for the entire year of nearly 40 megawatts in our system. And the goal of, and this is the 24-hour block of consumption right there, from 12:00 a.m. on August 10th at midnight on August 10th. And as you can see, the consumption, the peak is near 5:00 p.m., actually. It's not in the middle of the day. The thought with automatic infrastructure, or I'm sorry, time of use is that it will encourage people to not consume during the highest time of the year, right there where that arrow is, and remove that consumption, and instead opt to consume later on in the day. What you've now seen is a change in this area. We're no longer going up and down and up and down. It's much more smooth. We're not quite as high, and we're not quite as low. If we can do that through a rate structure that just encourages the residents to use their electricity more at night, not in the day, the electric utility will be significantly more profitable, and that can be passed through to lower rates to the residents, or that can be passed through to property tax relief. So, flattening and smoothing out of the consumption is a significant goal of time of use metering, which is something will be adopted. What will happen is the meters will go in, will collect a year's worth of data, and then we'll go to do a significant rate study. That will be done in 2014, when we're looking to create a new rate tariff. So, the next steps in this process, just, our goal here today is to talk about the financial benefits of AMI. I believe the council has understood it. I've had conversations with all of them, but this, I think, brings it home a little more clearly. The next steps are, we're working with Kurt. We're drafting about this much in documents that's going to be going out as a request for proposals to various companies. There are multiple companies that offer this infrastructure, this technology, and we hope to get that out within eight to 12 weeks, onto the street, and then within, hopefully, 60 days later, those RFP, those proposals will come in, and a committee made up of myself, Kurt Wilson, Mike Pienaar, superintendent, Bob Vogel, our engineer, Sal DBS of the water department, and Jim Sanderson will get together and review those proposals, and then we'll come back to council. At that point, we'll have a better idea what the cost is going to be, and we'll know more about the technology. With that, I ask if there are any questions. Gene?
Um...
And then Rob.
What kind of measures are we going to put in place to protect the system so hackers will not be able to get into, if you refer back to the very first picture, this particular box and take down all your electric and water utility for the entire town?
All the data that goes out, that goes over the air in these systems or down power lines in the system is generally encrypted at 168-bit encryption. Okay? Some of it's 256-bit encryption. Probably the most risk you would have is somebody hacking into the borough hall. It would probably be easier for somebody to go out, if they wanted utility data, for whatever reason, to go over and knock down a meter reader and steal the book. Okay? This is pretty difficult to hack into.
Yeah.
Can the system be brought down, is it hacked and crashed the entire system?
I think that's what I'm, not stealing the data, but actually...
Crash the entire system so that you don't have electricity?
Right. Take down the water and electric utility for the entire town.
It's no more vulnerable than it is now.
The system is...
All this is is a metering system.
Right. So, it's a metering...
It's measured what goes into your home. It doesn't have anything to do with shutting on or off electricity. Okay?
Okay. I was referring to the box that's going to be sitting in here.
Excuse me?
I was referring to the system that's going to be sitting probably in Jim's office, the main controller, if you will.
See, that's not a controller per se.
Yeah.
That is basically a data collector.
Okay.
So, in the current model, all we're doing is getting meter data. As we go forward with load demand and other possible forms of control, everything's codes. So, not only would you have to be able to communicate, you'd have to have some lexicon of what the IDs were and what commands they would accept. So, ignoring that it's encrypted, even if you got past the encryption, you still have to be intimately familiar with this exact system. So, it's actually very secure...
Okay.
On multiple levels.
Very few people will know what to do. That's what you...
Well, and these aren't, these systems are not so standard, so they're all covertly custom-built. I mean, we don't know what brand meters, what brand communications network, and all this is going to come together in gel, and it will be a unique creature.
Okay.
Called an integrated system, made up of a whole bunch of parts.
Rob? It will be no less secure than our purchasing system or our finance system is, and that's information that we have here in the borough on the borough servers, and that Jim backs up. We'll have data here, and then the data will also be backed up offsite. Matt, Rob?
Thank you. Just for clarity's sake, the $2 million cost estimate that we spoke about, if I'm not mistaken, we are currently in the second year of a five-year supplemental tax on water bills to raise $1 million. So, in effect, the net cost, based on your estimate, will be an incremental $1 million.
That's correct. That's correct. Two, water rate increase was incurred, and in five years, a portion of that will sunset that rate increase, that, those funds generated from that rate increase, which is approximately $200,000 a year, has been set aside. It was set aside last year. It's being set aside this year to pay for the capital of this. We do have enough right now in water capital and electric capital, we believe, to pay this, and as we're seeing here, it looks as though, within the first year, within three years, it will be fully paid back. And after three or four years, the system will continue to pay those dividends of $500 or $600,000 for that investment. And at that point in time, we could entertain the possibility of a rate reduction to help the residents in the town?
Absolutely. We can, there's plenty of time to debate that, and we're very fortunate to be able to buy power so cheap now. You never know what's going on in the future, but thank you. That's all, the only question I have.
Other questions? Right. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to part two.
Yes, this is a, what's called a voluntary demand response. And basically, what this is, is something that we can do now. We all, you know, 99% of the people here in this room are Madison residents, and we are shareholders and stakeholders in our utilities. And wouldn't we want to save a little bit on our electric utility bill, and then eventually save on our tax bill? And then probably even, most importantly, saving our planet, not only for generations now, but for generations in the future? One of the very hottest days of the summer, when the grid is stressed, there's two things that happen. One, the power companies bring extra power plants online to satisfy demand. The plants are often the oldest, dirtiest, and most inefficient plants in the system. It is very expensive to maintain and operate these plants. These are plants that are basically the older plants that kind of sit there without any uses of it at all until demand increases over their own capacities, and so they generate this, open up these old burning utility plants to generate the extra power that's needed. This increases the cost of electricity significantly. Madison pays roughly $16 million a year for electricity. Does anybody really know how much we pay for peak, when the eight or nine days of peak power? The Madison Utility Department, or Madison Utility pays over $3 million a year in demand charges to pay to keep up these power plants open and available during the peak summer days. So, these are eight or nine days just for us, but there may be other utilities that use these as well on their peak, which are generating a lot of pollution and environmental factors with that, while costing Madison a lot of money. As we said before, you know, we pay roughly over $3 million a year in peak demand charges. If residences and businesses voluntarily reduced their electric consumptions for just a few hours on the hottest days of the year, Madison can save over $80,000 or more. These savings could help not only reduce the electric rates, but also help reduce property taxes as we use our subsidies for that. We will be launching a program where notifications will be sent out on the eight or nine hottest days of the summer, asking residents to voluntarily reduce their electric consumption.
I'm just going to jump in here real quick and explain that this is an actual additional charge on our bill. We pay X amount for electricity, and then there is an additional charge on every monthly bill that we get called a locational reliability charge, which is a demand charge, and it's calculated based on the five hottest hours during last year's summer. So, as Doc is explaining, if we can ratchet back the consumption just on those days, that $3 million could be reduced. And this, this chart here explains how it would work. Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, by, you know, turning off one of four elevators in a building, which will help especially at the peak hours. Cool the building in the early morning hours where our rates are lowest. Turning on emergency generators, which can be used, you know, as a monthly generator test for buildings who have generators, so they don't use the power at that particular time in peak. And then turning off all non-incessional lighting in and around the home or in and around businesses. So, you can see, you know, at the chart below, how it reduces the burden on the electrical grid if we decide to do all those voluntary responses.
And as we've worked with Dr. Esposito and the utilities, the Borough of Madison can automatically do this already. For example, the public safety building that we talked about before is fully on a generator. It needs to be tested and run. We might as well test it and run on one of the hottest days of the year and take that building off the grid. Same with this building here. If we fire up our generator, half the consumption of energy in this building will be on the generator instead of on the grid. And our water tanks can be filled, and the system that fills the water tanks can be changed so that the pumps, which use an incredible, Steve knows where Steve, the incredible amount of energy that those pumps use to pump water from the lowest part of town to the highest part of town, those pumps don't have to run during the peak few hours that we target. By doing that, just the Borough of Madison could have an impact. Go ahead, Doc.
Question. Does anybody really know the traditional time of the day when the electricity load is at its peak?
No fair peaking.
Most people will probably think it's around midday, 12, 1, 2 o'clock, but actually, it's usually a few hours later when it's actually warming up on the inside, when the heat is, and the sun is on the, on the buildings, generating the heat later on. So, the peak demand is usually around 3:00 to 6:00, when after, actually, everything is starting to go along. So, it's not the midday that we're worried about. It's after the midday, when everything is heated up, and when the temperature is at its highest, it's usually around 3:00 or 6:00 p.m. So, that's the times where we need to kind of cut back, cool earlier, so the cooling stays longer during the day, the lighting, the non-incessional lighting, and things along those lines. Now, how would this program work? Well, basically, you know, the messages would be blasted via the Shop Madison eBlas, which is the email, Nixle. And of course, we can also get the Board of Education involved with this by using their Honeywell system as well during the peak times in the summer. So, you know, as a sample message, it would be something along those lines, and the message would probably read, "Good morning. This is a message from the Madison Electric Utility. Later today, we expect the electric grid that serves Madison to experience very high energy demand. During the hours of 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. today, please consider turning off any unnecessary lights and electronics, postponing the use of major appliances until after 7:00 p.m., and temporarily raising your air conditioning unit to 77 degrees. We thank you very much for your cooperation, and have a great day." So, this is something that I think is really going to be beneficial, not only for us now in terms of taxes, but again, this is just, this is a voluntary program. It's something that we kind of look into to try to see how we can save on our taxes, save on our electric bill, and of course, save on our planet. Are there any questions?
Does the 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. also apply to our largest consumers, typically their businesses?
Absolutely, yes. Notify anyone who can ratchet back on consumption voluntarily.
Because we really want those ones to volunteer.
Absolutely. We're going to be reaching out to everyone, and this is the launch of the program, where we're going to be reaching out to people and saying, "If you're willing to do this, if you sign up for Nixle, if you're on Shop Madison, you'll receive a message. If you can do it, maybe you can't, but if you can do it, if you can ratchet back on your consumption, when we tell you to do it, you'll be able to save on your taxes, you'll be able to save on your electric bill, and you'll be able to save on your planet." By save on your taxes, I mean, you'll help the utility save money, and hopefully, that will go towards tax relief. You'll obviously save on your electric bill because you'll be using less electricity, and you'll be saving a planet because the dirty power plants that are used on those peak days will be less reliant on them.
And I guess we could have some sort of recognition of, you know, you get a certificate that I may sign up, but as you said, it's not going to be a, until we get the new meters, it's not a older rate structure. It's just that you're going to be using less electricity on these days, so you'll save some, but you're doing a good thing, and that's why we get people to sign up.
So, keep your eyes open. We'll be notifying you shortly. We are expecting some hot days coming forward, and we'll send out notifications through the communication tools. If anyone is interested, please sign up for Nixle or Shop Madison, and hopefully, the Board of Ed will give us the opportunity to use that. Lisa's nodding her head. Thank you. Okay?
Our third and final topic is the residential solar electric rates.
I'm Betsy Allman and a few months ago, Mayor Conley asked the Environmental Commission to look into residential solar rates in Madison. So we had a working group, in addition to Andy Bennett, Stephen Stocker, Stevie Egan, and Ben Walcoitz were part of the group. And I expect in talking about solar, I'm preaching to the choir, but the reason why solar is something to look into is New Jersey, as a state, calls it an inherently beneficial use because it reduces the reliance on fossil fuels, foreign oil, improves air quality, carbon footprint, economic stability, and it's environmentally responsible. New Jersey policies have long encouraged solar power use. The renewable portfolio standards goal of twenty-two and a half percent by 2020 means that twenty-two and a half percent of the power used in 2020 should be coming from renewable sources. So that's a strong commitment. And our new representatives, J.C. and McKeon, are advancing a bill in the legislature that supports a floor for the solar energy credits, which dropped in value and they hope to establish something in the three hundred dollar range. All of this has meant that New Jersey is the, is number two in solar installations in the country. And our other peer group, the municipal utilities, on a per capita basis, we believe, have more installations than Madison does. Madison, the number is eight. We have eight homes with installations and there's no municipal installation. The Environmental Commission recommends that Madison's utilities support solar power as a policy and residential solar power with net metering rates in particular. And the reason basically is that we're entering a new world. The electricity market is changing. The energy efficiency of buildings will flatten demand. Electricity integrated with digital technology is more and more critical to our households, businesses, and municipality. And the overall trends support the use of local renewables. The smart grid, smart metering's importance, as was just discussed, the shift to distributed power sources, increased emphasis on reliability and avoiding the economic risk of power grid disruption, and the need for onboard control, storage, and power management. And the future will be even more supportive of local renewables. There'll be more services available over the grid, more options for consumers to buy, sell, and store power, and more investment in the smart grid with security and privacy. You know, having a, and having a flexible grid that integrates renewals and distributed sources and also time of use pricing. And these changes are moving us in that direction. But for Madison to accommodate and anticipate these changes, we need to gain experience with local and renewable energy, specifically solar in this case. We need to get the experience with a smart grid. We need to offset the peak demand with solar on hot summer days, and that would be with residential solar. And we need to use municipal solar installations and self-generation to cut our expenses because cutting the amount of money that we have to spend on our buildings, municipal buildings, will cut the expenses and all of that will be reflected as profit. And in addition, Sustainable Jersey supports the use of solar. If we do have a municipal installation, that's a ten-point project. If we have changes to the net metering rate structure, we can launch a community outreach program to get solar installations. If we had ten, a, an environmental group, basically funded by Google, would give four thousand dollars to our community. And of course, it has a positive effect on our carbon footprint. So the Environmental Commission would say that Madison's utility really needs to participate in solar installations as a policy for the future.
All right. Thank you. My name is Andrew Bennett and I'm going to speak a little more about the rate structure and some of the financials and why net metering is a good way to go. Currently, to put in solar installation, you get a new meter that has two unidirection meters inside of it. One is measuring consumption or the inflow of energy that you're using. The other is production or outflow. They're measured separately and what you use is billed to you at a rate of nineteen cents per kilowatt hour. And what you produce, you are paid at the rate of nine cents per kilowatt hour. What we're asking is for the council to consider a different rate structure that instead encourages All right. Want to give a little bit of example that'll demonstrate net metering and actually what Madison does is something that's more on the line to a net purchase and sale. So the example that I felt would really show it best is where you're producing through the solar installation exactly the amount you're consuming. So in the current rate structure with Madison, if you were to produce three hundred kilowatt hours and use those same three hundred kilowatt hours, you would pay fifty-seven dollars for what you consumed. You would get paid twenty-seven dollars for the same amount which you produced. The net inflow would be zero, because they netted out. You would end up paying the thirty dollars plus four eighty-six, which is a standard administration fee on everyone's bill, comes out to thirty-four eighty-six a month, or at the end of a year, over four hundred dollars using the energy that you produced, one hundred percent through your solar installation. And this example is the net metering, which is what the public utilities are regulated to follow. And in this case, by netting, they're netting out your production and consumption before any kind of financials are put against it. So the scenario, we consumed three hundred kilowatt hours and produced three hundred, gave you a net inflow of zero, zero kilowatt hours. You would still get that same four dollar eighty-six cent administrative fee to give an annual charge of fifty-eight dollars. So in this difference between net purchase and sale and net metering currently, there's over four hundred dollar difference to use the electricity that you are producing through the system that you put in. All right. Because of the current prohibitive rate structure, Madison is behind our neighboring towns in the number of residential solar installations. Towns like Florence Park right around the corner has seventeen installations already. Madison also has zero installations in the pipeline. So at this point with the rate structure, the way the SREC market has gone right now, there are no planned installations for residential in Madison right now. We're asking the council to consider the new rate structure that would encourage additional residential solar installations. The new rate structure that we're proposing, I don't like the way this one's worded, it's not a cost, it's a reduction in revenue of, again, I, I am, I overstate the potential of loss in revenue and I understate the gains. We say twenty thousand dollars a year. The reality is, you're probably talking about five hundred dollars a household, which would be more like four or five thousand dollars a year, not twenty thousand a year, in reduction in revenue. We say at the end of two years, the council could then have the option of revisiting this at a time when we might be going towards more of a time of use rate structure. This could be revisited at that time. Some of the benefits to Madison, those same peak demand charges that we're talking about on those hottest days and the hottest times of the day in that four to five timeframe, between sixty and seventy-five dollars a year would be saved for each solar installation by reducing that peak demand for Madison. It would also reduce the load on the infrastructure by producing during that time of day where it's hot, it's producing all its electricity. The people are using eighty percent of what you use, or at least what I use, is at night. So most of what we're being produced is during the day when things are most expensive, they're being used later in the day, when the demand is low and the cost is low. This is also going to improve the image of Madison as a green community. And all you have to do is go to, you know, Main Street, USA and seeing things like the success of the new community garden or to see that it is very important to the people in Madison and the surrounding towns to, to think about what they can do to be more And questions?
Rob?
In the net metering model.
Yes.
The homeowner continues to enjoy the benefit of the SREC.
Well, right now, it's not too much of a benefit. But there is SREC.
If you don't want it, I'll take it. I was just saying, right? Nope. So, but yeah, you would still maintain that benefit, right? Fantastic. Thank you.
So the, yeah, the two benefit potentially would be SRECs and then net metering.
Absolutely. Pays for the investment.
Yep. Other questions? Just, I have a couple. For typical residential, is it, they own as opposed to a power purchase agreement? What is the normal?
Here, they're own, I don't know residential doing a PPA, how well that would work.
Yeah, probably doesn't, I don't think that would work well at all.
I don't know if it's an option.
There is a, the Sustainable Jersey Program or Community Outreach Program through Eco Madison does use a PPA. And they're checking now to see whether they would accept Madison. They work with major utilities. They're just not sure about little utilities. So they're checking, but they think it's favorable that they can offer a rate that would be feasible and it would be.
All right. And typical regulations, one, that a, an array has to be designed to fit the home's needs and not designed to be a power supplier. So, so it's usually, they're on vacation, they're producing power, they're putting it on the grid, as opposed to the fact that residents are not putting in an array that's doubled their needs and trying to.
Right.
What they do actually is, when you're putting in solar installation, you have to show your last twelve months utilization and the system cannot be sized to produce more than that.
And the, I also understand other utilities' work is, they're not signing, sending checks back saying, "Here's your fifty dollars for the power you produced." It shows up as a credit on their bill and so it's net metering, net billing, and so it's softening for the next month or whatever it might be.
It rolls over to the next month. At the end of a year, there is a balancing, that balancing is done at the wholesale rate. If you overproduce for the year, you would get that remaining credit at nine cents per kilowatt hour.
And my, my last comment, just as a, believe in full disclosure, I was the liaison to utility when we put in this current rate structure. And the thing that you learn, continually learn when you're up here, my feeling was that was a mistake at the time and this is a far better thing, especially as we're looking to be, to be green. The twenty thousand cost, as you said, it's not really a cost, it's really, it's as much a part of doing the business. You know, right now, we have a far better cost by trying to buy for the peak when we really shouldn't have to. And so this is just a small net reduction for doing the right thing. Rob?
I have one more question. We're talking a lot about green and everything. So when we implement the program, which I fully support, what provisions are we going to put in place for twenty years from now when we have to replace the cells? When we have to replace the panels? Does that all fall on the, that's homeowner?
Yeah, that's, you know, my system. If my panels are inefficient, they're not producing more, they stop working, it's my system.
It's entire home, it's homeowner owned. So there's no liability back to the.
No, this is just a, a rate structure for the electricity that we're using and producing.
Okay. Yeah, there's, embedded in that was an encouragement that the boroughs start doing our own too, but this is, we're really talking about rate structure and.
That is, it's an issue, right? When you want to, gotta get rid of them, so.
Any other questions or comments? So next steps?
That's exactly what I was going to say, Mayor. Thank you for teeing that up. Next steps will be that we'll bring for council consideration, changes to the rate tariff and the ordinance that details the rate structure and we'll bring that to council for consideration. And if it's approved, then we'll be moving down the road towards making it a little more of an incentive for residential to have solar.
Very good. Kind of an extended agenda item, but very educational. Take the PowerPoint with you because these things may be on the test, but I think is very helpful and very worthwhile. And thank you for all that, put the time and effort.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone involved with these three presentations. I think they were very informative to go on and do what we need to do to, to save money and also to give our taxpayers the added benefits of owning our own utilities. Lost my train of thought. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to third quarter estimated taxes. Ray, you want to cover that?
Sure. Historically, the state of New Jersey does not adopt its budgets on time because it doesn't, all county boards of taxation cannot certify the tax rate in time for, sufficient for us to send out, the tax collector to send out the bills for the third quarter taxes that are due August first. So by tonight, we're asking permission to direct the tax collector, the CFO, to send out estimated tax bills. The third quarter taxes would still be due on August first with a ten-day grace period or twenty-five days after the mailing, whichever is the later date. And all probability, we'll make our timing. But we need to get the bills out and we're not going to be able to wait for the state and the county to certify the rate because we need the cash flow to meet our obligations. And this is something that we've done last year and probably will have to do for the rest of our natural lives.
Gina?
If I remember correctly, the cost of this is just the mailing.
The mailing, it's about two thousand dollars.
A few thousand dollars or something around there. Now, did we put that money in the budget?
There, there's money in the consolidated budget for the postage meter, yes.
For the what?
Yes. We have, there's a special line item in the tax collector's office and we also have additional dollars in the post, the Pitney Bowes mostly, postage, right.
Postage, right? Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? This is Resolution 157. Signed permit application fees came from Fran.
I, I can take that. That was a recommendation from Fran Boardman. She's the administrative secretary in the engineering department. She noticed and processes a significant number of temporary signed permits. Currently, there's no fee attached to that, but it generates significant work on behalf of her office and the construction code official and the zoning officer and who we pay on an hourly basis to go out and review these things. So the recommendation is that the governing body discuss and consider establishing a modest fee just to try to recover the cost of processing those type of applications. And I think the recommendation was four fifty dollar application fee for that, those type of signs.
Gina?
How does this proposed fee compare to our neighboring towns?
Fran did a poll of the two Chatham's in Florence Park and we're in the ballpark. It, it averages from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars. So I think she split the baby and that's why she's suggesting, but we're flexible. Right now, we, we're getting zero dollars and we're incurring a cost. So any fee would be helpful.
Thank you. Ray, is there still a time limit on the temporary banners?
There is a time limit on, on temporary banners and they're not something that we favor. It's, we are getting a significant number of them and they're also expanding the scope of the type of signage that people are trying to put up. The goal of a temporary signage is a special event, like the, the music concert at Geralda, for example. That's the type of event that requires temporary signage, not marketing for sale property. That should be more the, the Realtor permanent sign, not, not this type of temporary signage. Yes.
So next step, we'll produce an ordinance.
Next steps, if there's a consensus, would be to bring an ordinance back on the twenty-fifth.
Let it, anyone's fine with that? Fifty dollars?
Yep.
All at once, going twice?
Sounds good.
All right. Very good. Number five, appropriate twenty thousand dollars Electric Capital Improvement Fund for LED light fixtures, Cook Avenue parking lot.
This is a continuation of a demonstration on a new type of light fixture. We currently have two LED light fixtures in the Cook Avenue parking lot. It was, this was a recommendation from the electric utility superintendent, was approved as part of the 2012 capital request for the Electric Capital Improvement Fund. And this would be to authorize the expenditure of approximately twenty thousand dollars from that fund to complete that project. It's a test. I know we, the majority of our lights are not this nature and the electric utility superintendent wanted to see one complete parking lot done with this to compare to our, the traditional lights that historically we've used.
Bob?
Ray, just make sure this was in the budget?
This was in the electric capital budget, yes.
Okay. And in theory, these lights should use less electric than what we're using right now.
That's the goal, a wider, cleaner light, more safety, especially in the Cook Avenue parking lot, which is where this is dedicated for. And then as a demonstration to see if it suffices, I believe Councilman Esposito has other viewpoints.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the, although I'm all for energy efficiency and all, and I understand the, you know, the concept with that, in fact, I have one of those lights in front of my house to see how that is, you know, lighting is great, however, you know, I'm kind of hesitant to go along with this, and I understand that we already put that through on our capital budget, and I'll tell you a few reasons why. Number one, it's the cost of these particular lighting fixtures, they're, actually, the entire head gets replaced by this, which is a cost of anywhere from $500 to $600 per head. The entire head comes out at the end of the gooseneck, and then these are put in. So the, the costs kind of bother me a little bit, especially when everything is kind of newer on with that, so, you know, I did a five-minute search on the internet, and there's, there are several different grants that are out there that will actually pay for the entire project. In fact, there's one, I don't remember the town offhand, but I believe it's in New Jersey, they got a grant to replace the entire town with these sort of lights, without any cost to the taxpayer, so, you know, that's something I think we should probably look into to see, I know that the superintendent is under the weather, and then maybe we should get some more information from him concerning this. And then the other five minutes I spent on the internet was basically, you can get the same sort of energy efficiency by just replacing the bulb in the lamp to an LED bulb, which the cost is a lot more, a lot less than actually putting in a, an entire fixture. So what I'm suggesting is, number one, that we get more information from our superintendent, number two, more variety of certain things, including replacement bulbs instead of the entire head and light fixture, which I know there, they are out there, just to see, do that, and then we can purchase the bulbs and do the Cook Avenue, and find out if there's a difference between the actual head and just replacing the, the light bulb, so, I'm not sure if we, probably can put this off until we get more information with that, rather than spending $20,000 on, on heads where we could spend maybe $1,000 on light bulbs.
This is up for introduction, so one of the things we could do is, at, at the hearing, is have a presentation, full presentation, so we keep it moving forward, and so we get information on grant possibilities, the options with the lights, it is, just from my, my job, I've learned more about lighting than I ever thought I would, but it is more than just a swapping, because the LED has, you know, it's version of a ballast that powers it, so there's an adapter that would go in, so it's an adapter kit versus replacing the head. Another advantage, which we could have in this presentation, is the, you know, what is the cost of changing bulbs, so it's probably not significant, but the life of a LED versus a traditional mercury vapor or metal halide is substantially more, and the other information we should have in this report is light degradation, degradation, or the, for example, a metal halide light, within three months, loses, I think, 50% of its lumens, as opposed to LED is consistent, so when you have a, an area that really needs to be well lit, you're, you're constantly changing lights in order to maintain the level you thought you want, you had, so if we can have all that included in the report.
Yeah, and my only, you know, my other concern is that the residents across the street on Cook Avenue, if these lights are very, very bright, you know, you know, one in front of my house is not too bad, but if you have 20, you know, is it, you know, is it going to be, you know, is the lights going to be, you know, spread out above and beyond Cook Avenue parking lot?
Yep, I guess so that we can cover is the, which we, we learned a little bit at the planning board, is LED, since it's many small bulbs, you have a better opportunity to direct it where you want it to be, but we'll add that to the list. LED 101. Any other comments? So we'll keep this on for introduction. Complete streets, streets policy? Bumps here, there you are, it was.
Be brief, be, be, be brief, right?
Yes.
Complete streets, any questions?
Well, you might, all right, we appreciate brief, we'll give you 30 seconds.
In 2008, there was a federal policy started down in Washington about trying to include pedestrians, bicyclists, and accessibility in all types of streets, particularly those that are funded by the federal government and the state government. New Jersey state government adopted a policy in 2009, December of 2009, which by 2010 started mobilizing them in terms of their own internal shifts in viewing funded roads, and how to include both, both cyclists and pedestrians and accessible features in their funded projects. And this past year, they've kind of stepped it up to the local level in New Jersey, and tried to encourage the municipalities also to get on board with the complete streets philosophy. Now, Madison luckily has already adopted a bike plan, we've implemented a portion of that bike plan in the past, we've also sanctioned a traffic calming committee, which has a very distinct and well organized set of recommendations, all these documents are online at the Engineering Borough website, we also have a sidewalk plan, which basically determines where the existing sidewalks are in town, and we have a master plan, which has a circulation element in it, which determines what the traffic volumes are on our more heavily used streets, and so Madison has all the components for this complete streets philosophy already in its arsenal, and I would say that adopting complete streets policy, similar to the DOT policy, is a very easy step for us to make at this stage of the game. Also, last month, Commissioner Simpson went out and, and is doing a, kind of a rollout and a publicity action in the League of Municipalities magazine, and again, is encouraging all municipalities to get on board with the complete streets philosophy. As part of a carrot and stick approach, they are taking a, a point in the rating system for municipal aid assistance at the state level, so Madison's been very fortunate with getting municipal aid from the state for our more heavily traveled roads, they're including a point in that rating system to qualify you for state funding if you have adopted a state's complete streets policy, so, all in all, it seems like a no-lose situation for us, I do, again, it doesn't say that every street has to have sidewalks, or bikeway compatibility, or accessibility, but it says you need a policy which takes your priority streets and includes all those features in those roads, and so, again, I think with a project such as the Ridgedale Avenue project, which should be coming up in the next couple of years, where we will be seeking state assistance, and, and perhaps Green Avenue as well, again, going back for state assistance on those projects, this type of complete streets policy will help us get money from the state, and again, comply with our prior stated objectives, and that's the only recommendation I have, I think the resolution that's in the package is fine, the way it is.
Questions or comments?
Bob, once we have this adopted, what additional steps will we have to take in addition to adopting this, in order for us to apply for grants and future grants and?
The resolution, adopting a policy is all we need to do.
Is that right? Because somewhere in the package here, it says that we need to establish performance standards and, and expected outcomes, is that something we need to do as part of the total program, or it's just adopting the, this resolution? I'm not very clear on that.
Chatham had gone through a master planning process for the complete streets program, which comprised 100 pages of, of documentation. Again, Madison has taken the salient points of that in the past, and already gone through that process, and so I think reiterating 100 pages of policy is, is not an effort we necessarily have to go through, I'm certainly willing to do it, I just don't think it's, it's required.
Okay, so no additional work beyond this, at this point?
Happy to copy our, 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 our policy objective down to the, down to the planning board, and if they'd like to do more work on the circulation element of the master plan, absolutely. Is it required today? No.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, did you, Carmella?
I just wondered, way back when, when you were doing the Viking routes, about how much of that was accomplished?
I would say, we scaled it back to about 60% of the original request, Carmella.
Okay.
I'd get you a better number after the meeting.
Yeah, that's not bad.
No, it's not bad.
Not bad, no. So is that part of what you think about when you're looking at reconstruction of, of a road?
Well, if you look at Woodland Road, we put the bikeways in.
Right.
We didn't just mill and overlay it and forget about it.
Okay.
So the bikeways are there because the bike plan is there.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thanks.
Just a couple of quick comments, Bob and I did attend Complete Streets workshop last month, and one of the, was music in my ears here from the state, is shifting from the attitude of convince us why you're spending money on sidewalks or a bicycle element, to convincing us why you're not spending money on bicyclists and pedestrians, so this is, I think, a right, the right mindset. Woodland Road reconstruction, as great as it is, people know that I was a minority as being very supportive of sidewalks in there, and it hurts me to, to see that we redesigned the Noe intersection with a spot for the pedestrian to take a break, because it's a wide intersection, and that's part of the design, is extra wide intersections, you need a landing zone for pedestrians, we did that, and they get across, and there's no place to go except for back into the street, and same sort of thing at Sampson, where we choked that down again to where it should be, and we didn't take care of it. So hopefully, this will remind us and help educate the public as we move forward as the importance of looking at the full element, the days of just paving for cars are long gone, we now want to make sure we're getting everyone from point A to point B, whether you're in a car, on your feet, or on a bicycle, and with that in mind, the comment about, Jeanie made at the beginning about the traffic calming committee, it would be either, put it back as it was before, or even called Complete Streets Advisory Committee, in prior setup, we had Public Safety Liaison, the Engineering and DPW Liaison.
Board of Education.
Board of Education, Police, John Keimer, the engineer, and one free agent from the council also, or mayor and council, so we can reestablish that.
Yeah, also along the lines of the League of Municipalities, there was an exceptional article in, in last week's, last week's prearticle about a borough of Waldwick, who had implemented a very clear policy about sump pumps in their ordinance, and, you know, it's, I think, I read it, and I thought it was very similar to Madison's situation, so Mr. Coney went out and requested the, the ordinance that was actually passed for Waldwick, it's quite simple, it's quite straightforward, but it's very explicit about the removal of sump pumps from the sanitary sewer system, and I like the wording of it very much, I think that simplicity and clarity ought to be considered for Madison's sewer use ordinance, as it doesn't exist today, except in general terms, and so we thought we'd include that ordinance in your packets, I believe it was in the work session package previously, and we'd kind of like to go the next step, and perhaps recommend that our ordinance be updated, our sewer use ordinance be updated, to be very clear and very specific about the omission of sump pumps from our system, particularly in light of what's going on in North Street.
Questions or, Jeanie?
Yeah, any idea on the cost to the borough due to all the illegal sump pumps?
I would, no, I don't have an exact number, it's a significant percentage of what is treated during rainfall.
Right.
And that, we need to work with the Madison-Chatham joint meeting to establish just what flow rates we're talking about, above and beyond what we would normally treat, I believe it to be in the tens, if not $100,000 per year in terms of the range of costs. Ray, I'm not sure if you have a, a better sense of it or not, but it is not inexpensive, and in particular, it's a problem for us during extreme rainfalls, where the pump stations are overwhelmed, and we stand in potential effect of a DEP violation, and we don't want to do that for overflowing to surface water, when it's supposed to be a fully treated effluent, and so, but, yeah, it's a, it's a serious problem, we've been lucky, I think, in, in many years past, because DEP's got much bigger problems statewide, to avoid fines, and the potential's still there.
And the costs are twofold, the direct level is a pump station that's in our town, we, we maintain 100%, and the other's at the shared level of designing a sewer treatment plant that's bigger than it has to be.
It has to be.
Because the amount of sump pump water, Rob, you?
I think a good thing that we need to know is that there is an amnesty period for this, so in case anybody's getting a little bit excited about getting fined or whatever, they should know that there's an amnesty period to get them.
The, the whole issue of the procedure and the amnesty, I'm a little ambivalent about only because I think that we can roll out a program and do that internally without an ordinance, the section on the sump pumps, I think, is particularly important.
And Rob?
Thank you, I think that this is very important, however, I think that before we do anything, we have to do the math, and let's figure out exactly how much it costs us, okay, and then we need to offer some sort of a carrot to go with the stick, and I think we need to come up with some sort of a program that will help the residents who historically have been forced to, either forced or chose, you know, I'm not here to pass judgment, I'm here to save the town money in the long run, you know, are dumping their, have their sump pumps going into the, into the sewer line, and, and work with them, you know, to come up with some other way of, of getting rid of that water. I think if you just go in and you say, yeah, there's amnesty is great, but still, there's going to be a cost associated with this, and if we determine how much money it costs us now, then we can come up, we can all agree that, well, maybe it's worth, you know, spending 40% of that, or 50%, or whatever the number is, over one year, and actually rebate some money back to the homeowners, it will get them to comply, and we'll, we'll start saving money faster, but I think the most important thing that has to be done is we have to actually figure out what the true cost is, if that's all I'll say.
One of, one thing might be able to work on is a program similar to the sidewalk program, where you go, we go out and bid on it, and we can give a fixed rate for sidewalk in front of your house, it's still on the homeowner, but if there's a fixed rate about, because we get the advantage of buying in bulk, so to speak.
Like a reimbursement of some type? The sidewalk program we have right now has a $15 per square yard reimbursement.
Right, so we figure out what it costs per linear foot to run a sump pump from where it's not supposed to go to where it is, and come up with that price, might be a way to encourage residents to.
Good suggestion.
Yep.
Like a volume discount?
Right, yeah, yep.
My idea would actually go one step further, if we determine that this costs us $100,000 a year, and, and while we say, okay, we're going to take $50,000, and we're going to do what the mayor says, and we're going to get the volume discount, we're also going to rebate that $50,000 out to the, you know, to the residents, and then bang, after we do this, we're saving $100,000 a year for this illegal stuff.
Operations.
Exactly, so, yeah, I just think we need to, let's just get it done, right? But we need to do the math, I think.
Thanks for your support.
So next steps will be?
We'll draft an ordinance and go through the finances and make sure that's part of the ordinance proposal.
Yeah, and I think maybe it might be helpful to do a, maybe not as long as our one on electric tonight, but a PowerPoint presentation, so that, because this is something, we want to educate the residents on the value of this program, the reason we're having it, and have a good understanding of Waldwick's lessons they learned, so whatever we can, okay?
Can do.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Park Avenue speed limit, Carmella?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this agenda item is to ask Morse County to reduce the speed limit on Park Avenue from thirty-five to thirty miles an hour. A few weeks ago, we had a terrible accident. A little girl was hit, and thankfully, she was not killed. But the amount of traffic that's being generated by the buildings that are going up is going to create, I think, cars going more than thirty-five miles an hour. What's going to happen is Morse County's going to come in, and they're going to, they're going to repave that road, and when they start repaving, it's just going to make that road faster. And I think that what we kind of forget is there are businesses there on, on the west end of, of Madison that rely on clients to come in and out of their businesses, and it's getting very difficult. The, the recent pedestrian accident just brought to mind something that happened years ago to old friends of ours when their son of seven years old was killed on the corner of North Street and Park Avenue. And it, it was just absolutely amazing when this little girl was hit, that she was seven years old. So it's, it means a lot, I think, to a lot of people and businesses to reduce that. There's a very nice family who live up on Park Avenue, very close to Chateau Tierry, and two of the children are considered legally blind. They get along pretty well, but one of the things that they can't do is actually cross Park Avenue. As old as they are, which is like sixteen and fifteen years old, their, their parents will not allow them to walk across that road because it's so very dangerous. So I, I would like to have the support that we go to county, and we ask them to start helping us with reducing the traffic and reducing the speed limit there.
Jeannie?
Yeah, thank you. There are a couple of things that I would recommend that we supplement the resolution when we put this through the county, is I believe we have plenty of data on the summonses that we have issued along Park Avenue, or the accidents, collect all the reports, and also from the engineering department, good that Bob is here, that we, we have done plenty of study, traffic studies and all that, and we have collected the data in the past many years when we were going through with that development of Fallen Park.
Terrific, loads of traffic counts.
So we should all, right, we should put all that data together along with the resolution to send over to the county, to make the story more credible.
If, if you want that data, that's absolutely great, but I would say expedite it, because at any moment, any moment, an accident can happen.
County sponsored a lot of that data.
But if we, we can get the summons information from the police department, and so we can put this together fairly quickly, and if the resolution passes.
Could I recommend only that you also include traffic calming as an option for the county? Because one of the problems they're going to face is a similar problem that we face, in that on roads that are arterials or collectors and have a very high traffic count, there are ranges that have been adopted at the federal level and state level, where the minimum would be thirty or thirty-five miles an hour, and if it's not, if you want it lower than that, some extensive restudies required, you don't really want to go through that extensive restudy, so give them some options, because the traffic counts can count against you in terms of speed control. They want higher speeds for higher volume roads.
Bob?
I live on, right on Park Avenue. My family and I call it the Park Avenue Speedway. I couldn't agree more with Carmella. It's dangerous, and what makes that road particularly dangerous is not only the speed and when they're going to repave it, but there are right, very subtle rises and falls in the road, as well as curves. So even though going twenty-five miles an hour, it's still a dangerous road to try to cross. And when they open up those other buildings, the volume is going to be quite high. In addition to the speed limit, I'm not sure if that's even the answer, but I think it's a very good first step.
It's a start.
I agree with you. I would like to explore, I think what you're mentioning as far as traffic calming, I don't know what's involved in that. If it's an extra traffic light, if it's pedestrian crosswalks, I know in Chatham, when you get near the railroad station, there's a blinking light when a pedestrian's trying to cross, the car stops, something along those lines to give people a chance to get across the street. Locally, what we've done is lane narrowing, instead of a twelve to fourteen-foot lane, which is a highway lane, we'll knock it down to eleven or ten and a half feet. The county, I've already talked to them about this, and they're open-minded about it, so I think that's a good thing. Narrowing the lane slightly will tend to have a, a, a speed-reducing effect on people. Also, side friction, nice wide side stripes, maybe some bikeway Chevrons, maybe some slow-speed Chevrons in the middle of the road, and some signage to go along with it. All that provides what they call side friction, so that someone traveling has a sense, it's almost a sixth sense.
Yeah.
But it's a sense that they're going a little bit too fast.
So if we can add in the now there for, because the, the, the road is getting paved soon, so the, the battle to, to drop the speed limit may be a longer battle.
Correct.
But the opportunity, just as they did with Lewanica, they put the double yellow in there to answer a concern about, I, I had when the passing, passing was loud on Lewanica, is let's add in traffic calming measures to be incurred, included in the current reconstruction, such as narrowing through, striping, Chevrons approaching crosswalks, and, and so on. So get, get that added in there.
I think they'd, they'd be able to respond to that.
Yep.
So that's great.
I think that would, because your comment before about their pushback about the speed, something we learned that you might have known, known already, but I learned at the Complete Streets Work, Workshop, the ideal speed for moving most vehicles per hour on any road is thirty-eight point five miles per hour, for what it's worth. But that's, you know, when you get faster, there's more problems, you get slower, there's more problems, so they may be reluctant with the traffic counts to slow it down. We should still fight for that, but let's do the traffic calming, so at least make it a true thirty-five if they're not going to budge on it.
Correct, it'll help.
Jeannie?
Yeah, just want to, the police department would like me to report that, that incident that Carmella was referring to is still under investigation, and since both parties involved in the accident, have both hired lawyers and wanted me to report to make sure that no one will get the wrong idea, that because we're discussing the speed limit issues here this evening, just want to add to make sure that everyone understands that even though the accident was still under investigation, however, that they have concluded that the incident was not related to speeding.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, ordinance for hearing, none. Invitations for discussion, round two. This is when you may come up and speak on any topic, not necessarily on the agenda, but the same rules apply. State your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? Should be a sign-in sheet there, the clipboard.
There's no pen.
There's no pen? Somebody took the pen. There'll be a search as people leave tonight.
Me, Ramona Brown, of Mount Pine Avenue. I'm just here to say thank you. Instead of asking for something or complaining about something, I, I have a letter that I wrote that I just want to read and, and say thank you. I want to gratefully acknowledge the successful completion of the Cedar-Pine Rose Beach Avenues Road Construction Project, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eleven. Many were involved and need to be recognized in no specific order. I graciously thank both former and current members of Madison's government for their commitment to this project, former Mayor Mary Ann Holden, Mayor Bob Conley, council members Jeannie Sokamoto, Dr. Vincent Esposito, Donald Lynx, Robert Castenello, Bob Landrigan, Carmella Vitale, and former councilmen Sam Suriello and Sam Mentone. As borough engineer, I appreciate Mr. Vogel's efforts to plan and execute this project. It was also prudent of Madison to have Mr. Dennis Harrington responsible for the day-to-day activities of road reconstruction. Dennis ensured the job was done to contract specifications and in the best interest of Madison. For well over a decade, I have pursued the road improvements for our neighborhood. Over the years, I have recognized the limitations and timetable of government, and I have patiently persisted with this endeavor. I have approached many government officials over several administrations. It is filling to finally see the completion of this project. We have struggled for years with water issues. I'm hopeful that our improved storm sewer system and Belgium block curbing will alleviate these problems. It is also aesthetically pleasing. The long-term benefit to our community of this project is immeasurable, and I want to thank you again for your commitment to our neighborhood. I also want to briefly acknowledge Mrs. Vitale and Mr. Landrigan are looking into improving the noise ordinance, because I've been impacted by construction of villagey, and I think it's fairness to things that are going on in Madison throughout the town with construction, and, and, and I didn't even know this Park Avenue issue was on the table, but I live right off of that, and I do concur that there is speeding problems. I actually meet my daughter's bus, and it's right down next to Mr. Landrigan's house. Half the time, people don't even stop for a red light bus, so I literally have to meet my daughter's bus to help her cross the street, because it's so dangerous that I don't feel comfortable with her crossing. There is very, it's very difficult. The other day, I had to have my car repaired. The tire was broken, and the snowcoat took care of it, and I had to walk from my house to town to get my car and back again, and it's very difficult to walk along there. There's no sidewalks down at my end, it doesn't begin until way past, so you have to walk on people's yards, and, so whatever you can do to help with Park Avenue would be greatly appreciated. Thank you again, I appreciate your efforts, and I know sometimes you don't hear the accolades, but I felt it was important to let you know, we appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing your letter. I, at the beginning of the meeting, I acknowledged your letter, but I didn't.
Well, that was a different letter.
Yeah, yep, and again, and again, thank you for your, the cookies for rewarding our.
Small thank yous.
Yep. All thank yous are appreciated. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Mr. Sursiello?
Sam Sursiello, Park Avenue, Madison. Two things I want to talk about. The last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of talk about the situation with our police department. My understanding, there's been a settlement.
Our attorney can comment on that?
Has there been a settlement?
There, it was approved, I think, two meetings ago, the governing body approved the insurance company to enter into a settlement with the plaintiff.
How much was the settlement?
At this juncture, I, we're still finalizing it, and when that's finalized, I'll let you know.
Well, the rumor is about close to a million dollars, is that?
That's not an accurate rumor.
A little higher or a little lower?
Sir, I just told you, I'm not going to tell you until it's totally finalized.
Sam, yeah, it's not twenty questions.
But it's not, it's, it's lower than that figure significantly.
And then, that was paid by an insurance company, whatever it is, the number, but then it's costing the taxpayers close to a hundred thousand dollars for legal fees and, you know, the deductible, is that true?
Well, just like every insurance company, every insurance policy, just like you have with your homeowners or your car, the town of Madison has a deductible, a copay, that they're responsible, whether it's for any, any litigation that ensues. Part of the insurance, they assign legal counsel, the legal counsel's paid for by the insurance carrier, and so that's paid or absorbed by the insurance company.
And just, some was in the patch about the punitive damage, in other words, that's not covered by insurance, right?
What's that?
The punitive damage, if there's.
There were no punitive damages, this is a settlement.
There's a possibility, though.
Well, not now, if there's a settlement, there's no, there's no admission of wrongdoing on either side, so there's no finding of punitive damages.
Well, that's not what I understand. And then, as, as, first of all.
One minute, just so you can pace yourself here.
Why do these things like happen? In other words, why, this happened in two thousand and ten, with, according to what I hear, the chief of police did the wrong thing, okay? That's why we're settling. Why do these things happen? In other words, what's going to, what's, what's, what's going to take place if he did something wrong, and he's the chief of police? Is there's going to be some kind of, I don't know, discipline or something? Because quite obviously, what I've been reading in Patch and what people have been talking about, it was totally wrong what he did to this, to this twelve-year veteran. And if, it's not right, and what is the mayor council going to do about it? Plus, you know, this happened a couple of years ago, you know, we got a liaison, we got the, the town administrator, how come this stuff has to come where it's costing all this money? Why can't we stop these things?
Well, I'll answer the questions. As I explained to you at the last meeting, first and foremost, you mentioned the, the liaison of the police department, you mentioned the mayor and the administrator. Under the Chief Police Powers Act, which is found in forty-eight, which was passed by the legislature many years ago, the police chief runs the day-to-day operations. It's illegal for the governing body, the mayor, the administrator, to engage or try to run the police department. The whole purpose of it is they want to isolate the police department from any type of political influence whatsoever. So the chief runs that department on the day-to-day operations. We are precluded from interfering with running that operation. Second off, if there's any type of issues within the police department, for example, somebody's alleging sexual harassment, somebody's alleging whistleblowing, they have their own rules and regulations, and they have their own internal affairs investigative unit. We cannot investigate a police officer. What happens if there's a complaint? It's referred to the investigative, it's called the IA Officer, the Internal Investigations Unit. They conduct the investigation of any type of wrongdoing. We don't engage in that, we can't under the Attorney General Guidelines. Lastly, we're not, I'm not going to comment about whether somebody did something wrong or right. A settlement is a settlement, there's no issues, there's no statements of wrongdoing, but the employee has not been raised, I'm not going to discuss the employee, it would not be appropriate to discuss any individual member. As I said to you, we don't investigate the police department, they patrol themselves, that's codified the Attorney General Guidelines, and ultimately, if there's any type of problem with the chief of police, this governing body, this mayor, this administrator, is precluded under law from conducting an investigation to a chief of police. The only person who can investigate a chief of police for any type of wrongdoing is the county prosecutor, and that's set forth in the, in the Attorney General Guidelines. And the reason for that, Mr. Sursiello, is, and I just explained to you, there's an internal affairs unit that governs the police department and does investigations, and so it'd be very difficult for, let's say a sergeant is the head of internal affairs, it'd be very difficult for a sergeant to be investigating his superior officers. So that's why the rules specifically say that anything like that is referred to the, the prosecutor's office at the county level.
Thank you, and your, your time's up, so. No, no, that was, I didn't even count that.
You mean I can't?
I, I told you, you, you brought up a topic that you knew we couldn't answer anyway. You should have, you've got to, just like I started at the beginning, it takes a little bit longer to write that short letter. Please use your time wisely. Anyone else wishing to be heard? James?
After James speaks, can I come back and talk?
No.
I'm only allowed one, three minutes?
Yep, you have your one shot, as I said, please.
Where, where's, where's that law written, Bob?
Please use your time, time wisely, like, that's all I ask.
I tried.
You brought up something you've, you learned.
Where's the law written that I can only speak?
Sir, the, 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 the way the meeting is conducted, it was announced at the beginning that it's a three-minute speaking for public, people have a time to get up three minutes before to talk about items in the agenda, and the three minutes are open. You have the right of the Open Public Meeting Act to regulate the time. It's now twenty of eleven, people, they do regulate the time so we can move, keep the meeting moving forward. That's likely set forth in an ordinance in the borough of Madison where they have a three-minute timeframe for speakers at a public meeting, and that's, that's where it's set forth.
We sat here for two hours, listened to two presentations.
Sam, you, you know the rules, we've been.
Just, just one more, who, who, this is a, a town ordinance that, that we can only speak to?
Actually, the, I, I've attended several workshops on mayor leadership skills, and also the responsibility as a council member, I think, I think you attended the same workshop, and it was very, as long as you're consistent and fair with the, the way the public portion is handled, you have flexibility, which could be, for example, a total of thirty minutes, or what more likely.
be, for example, a total of thirty minutes or what more likely happens in municipalities is a time per, per person. So it, it helps you plan your time, so. And you know where to find me too, if you want to need to talk to me directly. Thank you.
Uh, James Sullivan, twenty-five Broadway Avenue. And my only two, uh, concerns would be with the, putting the solar, uh, solar cells on top of houses that I know in California, people are suing over, uh, solar rights to their houses because the trees of neighbors interferes with, with the amount of light which reaches the roof. So I hope that the borough is more focused on getting solar cells on top of large municipal structures and schools, which have extremely large flattened roofs, before we move into our residential structures. And my other concern is also with the LED lighting, they don't generate any sort of heat. So this has become a problem in the Midwest more than here because I don't think we've quite hit the cold temperatures where the, uh, lighting instruments will actually ice up during the winter months and they become a lot, throw a lot less light. So that's also something we should be aware of and look into in case we do have another stormy RC winter where sometimes these things can say kicked on there. It might preclude additional maintenance fees to either clean them or just cause, uh, hazards when you cannot see what the traffic signal is. So those are my two complaints. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction of ordinances.
Okay, the ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for June the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I asked the.
Little statement is missing. Yes.
Yeah. You throw off my script.
Oh, guys, the whole script is gone.
Right.
Okay.
So please, uh, call up ordinance eleven, two thousand and twelve and ask the, uh, clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance eleven, two thousand and twelve is ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating twenty thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for purchase of LED light fixtures for the Cook Avenue parking lot.
Mayor, I move ordinance eleven dash two thousand and twelve. I second it. Council discussion?
Well, I've already discussed my opinions about all this stuff earlier and that, but I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, you know, we need to look into this further and hopefully, you know, within thirty days' time, when we have to do it the second time around, um, you know, we can get all this information and make the right decision, uh, for the taxpayers. Thank you.
So this would have a hearing of June twenty-fifth.
Two weeks.
Um, is that realistic or shall we ask for a different, uh?
They want to defer to give us more time.
Okay.
I mean, there's four things here that you wanted, that's pretty hard to get.
So that would be a, a final hearing for July?
One second. July the ninth.
Ninth, yes.
July the ninth. It's the June twenty.
Right. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
No.
Mr. Lynx?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions? And we're going up to one sixty-five? Guess the clerks, uh, will need.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Our teleprompter broke, so I apologize.
I can say in my sleep, consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions. One fifty-five through one sixty-three, one sixty-four as amended, and R one sixty-five dash two thousand and twelve.
Second. Discussion are ones that should be pulled? Don?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, under one fifty-eight, two thousand and twelve, um, I'm going to vote no in the one area. I see no purpose in having a pub, uh, at Drew University, where the largest problem we have in this country, in this state, and certainly in this county is underage drinking. I would, I will vote no for the renewal of the Drew, uh, university.
And, and just to, um, and, and this is a, a battle being fought across, uh, college campus across the, uh, the country, but one thing to keep in mind that even though it may sound counterproductive to have a pub on a college campus with a drinking age of twenty-one, precluding most of the, uh, members, uh, students from attending, it is one of the few places where actually there is a control and they pay a higher, a very high price for violations as far as serving. So i- in a way, it is a much better controlled environment than where you don't have pubs and they're doing binge drinking in the rooms and then going out and so just, and I understand where you're coming from. I just want to clarify.
My, no, I, I, well, okay, but you're saying that I really could care less. I cannot vote for something that, uh, can enable underage drinking. It's wrong. I don't care who does what and where. I'm not going.
Yeah. Just to be clear, it does, it prevents underage drinking because they cannot, they, if they have a high price to pay because there's a license involved if they serve underage.
How many times have our policemen called out there for, um, rushing this in the last year? That's how I go there because you can't tell me they don't have a problem. There is a problem. And that's why I'm going no.
Bob?
Is this just, this isn't just for Drew University, it's for all liquor licenses, correct?
So how would we, if we want to vote against it, is it an all or nothing shot or can we, uh, can we, you know, bifurcate the list or whatever?
You can vote, this is resolution one fifty-six, I believe.
One fifty-eight.
One fifty-eight. You can vote yeses to all except for.
Thank you.
Uh, the Pub at Drew University.
If you are thinking, I, I would implore you to really research it because the drinking will not stop, but now you are taking, you would be taking away the one area there, it is controlled very, very tightly. And I will leave it at that. Any other com?
Well, I'll just comment on that. I understand what Don's saying, uh, a lot, but I've been up at Drew, Don, quite a bit, and the drinking that goes on isn't from the pubs. They're typically older kids. The alcohol that's being consumed there is alcohol that's been brought into campus and it's being consumed in their rooms.
My point, however.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. We don't have to go back and forth.
Well, my point is it's different. If I vote to say yes to that license on campus.
Mm-hmm.
Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me that we're going to say, hey, it's okay, Ben, and please, no one tell me that there is no underage drinking there? There has to be.
Oh, it does go on, I know.
Of course it does. And I'm going to vote no because I believe I'm right and I can't condone it. And I could care less if that's you does it or any other college in the university.
Jenny?
Yes, um, in order to meet the qualification before this comes to list, the fire department, the health department, the police department need to go through their homework to do.
Correct.
Inspections, correct?
Yes.
So, um, if you were to look at the, um, report from the Madison, um, Fire Department, it talked about that, um, that it had the opportunity to inspect all the establishments, but if you look at the very last paragraph, that it says, it should be noted that the pub, referring to the Drew University pub, is still closed due to building renovations that are taking place. So the fire department had no information about the pub. Does that mean that they actually didn't get the okay from the fire department? That's how I read this.
I believe it was closed at the time of the inspection. Doesn't affect the renewal of the license. The, the pub was closed for, for, uh, renovations to the facility and did not, um.
Did they get inspected?
Well, it's a building, so it'll be a whole series of probably far more thorough inspections than they normally would do because they've got to have a sprinkler inspection, they've got to have the fire alarm inspection for that whole building. If you.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just asking for, um, don't they need?
There have not been any violations from the health, uh, fire or police department regarding the pub.
Right.
Any violation would have to be reported to the municipal clerk, you know, underage drinking or selling outside of hours or any other issue would be reported and it would have received.
Understood. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify and try to understand what the fire department letter is referring to. It did say that visited all the businesses. It sounded good, right? But it did say that had no information about the pub. Does that mean that?
No, it's a catch, it's a catch twenty-two. There's nothing to inspect right now because it's under construction.
Facility is under construction.
So we'll be thoroughly ins- inspected upon final, uh, permits get, or final inspections done.
But we're approving their license before that.
Well, you're, it's approving the renewal. They already have the license, so it's a continuation of their license. Um, and as the mayor stated and as the clerk noted, the, the police department hasn't noted any problems with the license, neither has the, uh, ABC. Um, but before they could reopen, the fire department will absolutely have to inspect it to ensure that they have adequate sprinklers, uh, exits, and it's a safe place and what the, what's the capacity load for the place before it can open. And if the firehouse does not deem it acceptable, they won't give them the, the right to reopen.
So, um, our approval, it's not contingent upon the fire department's inspection?
No, your, your vote is just to renew the license, uh, the fire department inspection and the building inspection, that'll take place as to whether or not to reopen the pub when the building renovations are complete.
Then why did the fire department have to go to all the businesses on the list?
Well, it's, again, you're, you've got a catch twenty-two. They, 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 they went to all their places to do their routine. Right now, there is nothing to inspect at Drew because they're under construction. They, they are probably at the highest level as far as, um, fire code because it's assembly build, type building. This is their student center, it's in there, so that you're talking about large numbers. So it is a, uh, maybe even a higher threshold than, um.
So there's no reason to expect that when they, right before they open, that they're going to fail any sort of.
If, if they fail, they can't, they can't open because regardless of the, the license. If they fail a building inspection, they're, they're not opening. In fact, it's a bigger issue because the building probably wouldn't open.
And if you recall, uh, when they had the tragedy at Seton Hall University a number of years ago, um, they've made the restrictions on, uh, fire suppression, et cetera, much more stringent, uh, in universities and colleges just because of that, because you have people not only visiting but living there. So the, the, the regulations regulating that type of institution are much more stringent. So it'll be, they'll often meet all the, those requirements in order to open and operate as a student center.
Don?
My point, it has nothing to do with the building. It has nothing to do with the fire. It has nothing to do with the board of health, very simply. If we renew this license, we're telling them on campus, come on in, baby, establish your path. Now, we can act naive, we can say, oh, no, they have printed regulations. Really? I doubt it. I doubt no more than downtown. My point is, I am not going to the neighbors with my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lynx?
I'll be voting on that subject.
On, on, on all and then you just, uh, state your.
I vote on all except for the portion for Drew University.
Mr. Catalonello?
I vote yes on all except for the, uh, renewal of the liquor license at Drew University in R one fifty-eight.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes, to all.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Four-two, correct. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public safety, thirteen thousand eighty-four dollars ninety cents. Health and public assistance, three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars thirty-two cents. Public works and engineering, a hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars seventy-seven cents. Community affairs, one thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars twenty cents. Finance and borough clerk, two million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand twenty-seven dollars twenty-two cents. Utilities, thirty-two thousand two hundred dollars and forty-three cents. The total is three million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
I move the vouchers for approval.
Second. Discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lynx?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
New business, I'd like to make the following appointment, needing, uh, council confer- confirmation from the council, and that is to appoint Joseph Trousse to be the Board of Education representative on our new Madison, Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I move the appointment.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?[1745.12]